Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 15th, meeting of the Board of Directors of the Dover Area School District. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Banco, could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Rauchser?
Here.
Mrs. Meford?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Emig?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
And Mr. Cook?
Here.
Thank you, all are present.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight, we have presentations and celebrations. Mr. Cherry?
All right, I have one presentation and celebration this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Cook, or Mr. Cobb, to come forward. Do you have any members of your staff with you?
I have three teachers here.
Mr. Cook, if you want to join them, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you excited. You're more than welcome to join them.
I like surprises.
Come on up. So, these are always good things to get. So, earlier this, and last week, we opened up a nice little gift and wanted to present to North Salem, the 2014-15 Keystone Award for Academic Excellence with a reward for high expectations. And I wanted to present this to North Salem Elementary School. And thank you for all of your hard work and everything that you're doing for our students every day. So, thank you.
Here, why don't you get in the picture and I'll take it?
Yep.
I heard shaking hands is on the hand.
Okay, that's it. Next on the agenda is Communications. First up are student reports.
Okay, I'm going to start with Dover Elementary. Each month, teachers at Dover Elementary School nominate two students in their classroom that are proud leaders for a special award and certificate. In January, teachers selected students who modeled perseverance. In February, they looked for students who were always respectful. And in March, their goal is ownership. March Family Fun Night is Saturday, March 19th, at Fountain Blue Skating Arena from 4:30 PM to 7:00. And now, to live, Live Student Advisory is sponsoring Pennies for Patients to collect loose change for Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Grade five band and choir concert is scheduled for Wednesday, March 30th, beginning at 6:30 PM at the high school auditorium. Grade six band and choir concert is scheduled for Thursday, March 31st, beginning at 6:30 PM at the high school. And their PTL Art and Science Fair will be held on February, April 8th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM in the live multipurpose room. To North Salem, their talent show is on Friday, March 18th, at the high school. And Beth Robell, an author, visited North Salem for Read Across America Week. Their students logged over 28,000 reading minutes and had their chance to put Mr. Cobb in jail over the lunch periods. And to Waggles Town Elementary, they, on March 30th and 31st, for their grade five and six band and choir concerts are at the high school, beginning at 6:30 PM. And they want to invite anyone that would like to come. And stop by Sarah's Creamery on March 30th and support the Waggles Town PTO.
All right, and now going to the intermediate school. Many of you guys know of the Avedum program at the high school. It now got translated over to the intermediate school. So, they had a great introductory session with the intermediate school students over there about Avedum, which again means that we've got each other's backs. They'd like to thank all the support of all the members a part of that, to Mr. Folk, Mrs. Shearer, Mrs. Mayberry, Mr. Grog, and Mrs. Parker for initiating and leading the great club. Next, they had their Pennies of Patients fundraiser. It was another huge success. They set a goal of $8,002, and they raised just over $8,017, which I just think that's phenomenal. Last year, they ranked top 100 in the country, and they're anxiously waiting to see where they placed this year. Mrs. Kolschek's class raised the most per student at $70 per child. And Mrs. Krebs' class raised the most money per homeroom, which accumulated to $1,000 in total for that one homeroom. On Thursday, the 17th of March, they're going to be having their Arts Extravaganza Night. So, the community is all invited. They can get involved in some fun, interactive activities. They're going to be having a photo booth, art stations, geocaching activities, and so much more. They're also going to be displaying some of the musical talents from over in the intermediate school. They're going to have special performances from those musicians. Then going on to our high school, we had 29 Dover students attend the DECA State Conference from March 1st through the 3rd at Hershey, Pennsylvania. We were lucky to have five different, yeah, no, four students placed. Emily McNew placed fifth in Personal Finance. Josh Hogan placed second place in the state for his startup business plan of Hogan's Ice. And then myself and Tyler Hess, we were awarded first place for our business growth plan for my current business, Thomas Millwood Entertainment. Josh, myself, and Tyler then qualified to go on and compete at the International Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, later this April. At the state level, to give you an idea, there was 2,000 students. Down at International, there's about 20,000 students. So, it is quite an honor to have the three of us qualified to go to the International Conference. Many of you were at the Mary Poppins showing. It was a huge success. I've heard great things all throughout the community. People are saying it was one of the best musical in Dover history, so that's awesome to hear. So, we thank all the students that were involved in the acting, the production, the stage crew, all that takes that to succeed. It takes a lot of background work, and it's just awesome to see all our kids and staff help with that. And then, swimming and diving team, we had a couple people who qualified for the state championship meet this week at Bucknell University. We had Casey Marshall. He qualified for the 100-yard butterfly and backstroke. And then, our boys 400-yard freestyle relay, which consists of Casey Marshall, Tobias Kwazniak, Hunter Link, and Cameron Aspie, also qualified for states. And then, last but not least, the 2016 triathlon will be held on April 30th. For those of you that aren't familiar, we had the triathlon last year, benefited our own Maddie Hill. This year, it's going to be benefiting three different students in York County who are currently battling cancer. We have Marcus Josie, he's a senior over at Northeastern, who's fighting leukemia. Maddie Hill, which again graduated from Dover Area High School, is facing her third fight with leukemia. And then, Ryan Arevlo, which is a third grader at Dover Elementary, is recovering from a recent battle with brain cancer. So, it's going to consist of a 5K so far. They're looking at adding other activities. The 5K portion is now available for registration. Anyone that's wanting to participate in the 5K, they can go ahead and register at active.com. So, great things going on in all of our schools, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, folks. Congratulations, Aaron, on that first-place finish. I think that deserves a round of applause for Aaron. Many great things happening. Do any board members have any questions for our student representatives tonight? Okay, if not, you're free to take off if you would like, or hang out if you'd like to.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is our public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda. As a reminder, this is a three-minute period for each speaker. If you're interested in speaking, we ask you, please approach the microphone and state your name and address for us for the record. So, if there's anybody that would like to speak, please come forward now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Board President's Communication. We did just recently have an executive session tonight, which began at 6 o'clock. Our executive session was held to discuss legal and personnel matters and to gather more information on the early retirement incentive item, which was on tonight's agenda, was Item 11E under the Human and Fiscal Resources Committee. That item is being removed from tonight's agenda, so we will not be including that in tonight's consent vote for your reference. We also did discuss board policy related to our involvement and the way we conduct ourselves in outside meetings and events such as PTO meetings and other activities like that, and review the protocol associated with that. So, that was tonight's executive session. I did have a few other items just to mention under other communication items. The first was, I want to thank Mr. Cherry and many of the administrators who are in the room tonight for providing us with the facilities tour on Saturday. It was very enlightening for some of us to see some of the differences between the buildings, where some of the greatest needs are for some facility improvements throughout the district. So, thank you for taking time out of your Saturday schedules to be there and open up your buildings for us and to point stuff out. I do want to echo Aaron's comments regarding the musical. We, as a family, had brought some outside individuals to see it, and at the end, they said they had to remind themselves that it was a high school musical and not a professional production. They were that impressed with it, so congratulations to them. And I also, I know it wasn't mentioned by the student reps, but I had the opportunity to attend the Honors Choir Concerts, York County Junior Honors Choir, as well as the York County Band, in which we have a lot of students participating. And again, they made us Dover proud, and what they did in those activities, outstanding groups. One other last item is that we have a new grandma at this table, so congratulations to Mrs. Herman, who has a new little granddaughter. We have, next on the agenda, our approval of our minutes. I would make a motion that the board approve the minutes of the February 18th, 2016 Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Banco, could we have the vote, please? Well, questions are discussion, I'm sorry. Jumping ahead.
I have technical difficulties. I can't get it moved up. I'm at five, it won't go up higher.
Seth, can you orally record the vote? If you give me your yes or no or abstain?
I give you a yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries with nine yeses. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda items. If we could take a moment, the agenda for the consent agenda, everything that you see here that has an asterisk after it will be voted on with one vote tonight. So, we've asked Mrs. Banco to slowly scroll through the items that will be covered under this one vote, so you have a feel for what we will be voting on with this one vote. There's a lot under Human and Fiscal Resources.
Disney wants to.
Okay, that's it. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. We'll take questions from the board by category under the consent agenda. Are there any questions related to the items under the Comprehensive Planning section of the agenda, which is the Comprehensive Plan District Culture Survey? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee items. Are there any questions regarding the five items that are there? Four items that are there.
Yes, I do have a question regarding Policy 217. There's a statement on the end of that policy that says that the fourth year is not required. I was just curious, for graduation, I was just curious how often that happens. Is that logistically possible to attain the graduation requirements without needing to attend the entire fourth year? It is?
Logistically, it's possible. We don't have many kids actually do it, but, I mean, that's really the discussion about progressive high school anyways. Really, the question's been, with many superintendents, do students really need to attend a four-year comprehensive high school if they can do everything in three? Those who do sports would probably stick around for four, because they'd be taking a look for scholarships and so forth. But, logistically, it can be done. I don't think we've had many students do it. You'll see the three and a half every once in a while, and they'll do an early graduation, in which we invite them back to walk. But, there has been a big movement, not only statewide but nationally, to begin to talk about what are opportunities for kids to excel and speed through kind of high school so that they can go on to other opportunities.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Curriculum and Professional Development? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Human and Fiscal Resources category. Any questions there?
I have a question. What's the difference between, I guess this goes to Jen, what's the difference between Mrs. Spaulding and Mrs. Kohler's position?
Okay, so, the Secretary to the Business Office and Technology and Facilities, so they would, that secretary would be handling, again, technology, facilities, safety, and the business office. And then, you have the Secretary to Food Service and Transportation, so it's splitting out those duties.
Okay, thank you.
I believe I have three questions in this section. The first one is in Section F, addition to substitute teacher, guest teacher listing. For the sake of our community and myself, how does someone apply for the guest teacher program?
Currently, that's run through the IU, so that they would directly apply through the IU program.
Contact them.
And we are partnering with them. So, if they're local, they can actually contact Dave Casino, and he can help them through the process. But, like I said, the program currently is being run through the IU. But, if you know of anyone, I think easiest step, have them call Dave, and he'll direct them in the right place.
I do happen to know somebody that was interested in that. The second question I had is pertaining to Section H. I guess I'd like a little bit more background. It seems like a lot of money to spend for something. I'm wondering why we need, what is the purpose for needing to combine all three of those for that sum of money? Just to throw $1,650 at, it seemed a little frivolous to me, to be honest.
There was a recommendation by PSBA about a year ago to actually merge the 300s, the 400s, and the 500s together, because many of the policies state exactly the same thing for each one of the classifications. So, what they will actually do for you is do that complete merge and merge all of those collective individuals together into one section and one policy. So, given the fact that many of our policies are well over a decade in overriding, we thought it would be worth the time and the $1,600 to actually have them merged for us. They'll rewrite them for us and send them back, and then we'll do the edits, send them to CGA for approval.
Right.
And then have them board approve. So, it's a lot more work than what it was. I mean, you can see how long it takes us to sometimes do one policy, so now you're talking three sections of policies and sometimes 10 to 15 policies per section. So, they can actually do this very quickly, send them to us. We edit them, add to things that we need to, and then send them to CGA for approval. So, I think in terms of time and efficiency, it's well worth the investment. I'll let Mika weigh in.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, that we agree with PSBA's recommendation in that regard. And, you know, just a little bit further, when you have three separate policies that apply to the three categories of employees, over time, which is what happened here and what happens in many districts, they tended to be amended piecemeal, and then there were inconsistencies with how you handle employee matters between the three groups. Now, sometimes those three groups are, need to be treated differently, but we believe you can provide for that in one unified policy, and then you don't have inconsistencies where you don't want them among the three different groupings. So, it makes a lot of sense in the long run to put them together.
Sounds like a good plan. I mean, it sounds like the right thing to do. It just seems like $1,650 to do that seems, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but it seems a little much to me. So, that's where I'm having a little bit of the hang-up on it. So, thanks for answering that. Then, the third question I had is related to Section J on the bill's paid report. It's still in this section. I noticed that there were approximately 25 volunteer clearance refunds that were given for $10 on that. I know we had that discussion in committee. I know the state changed the rules after the game was started, and some of the volunteers went through the process of applying. I couldn't remember that we had made a decision that those that had already applied were going to be refunded, but I'm assuming that that was an administrative decision that was made.
That would have been, those would have been people that had applied prior to the change.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions under Human and Fiscal Resources? Okay, hearing none. The next category would be Safe and Supportive Schools. I believe there is one item under that section. Are there any questions related to that item? Okay, hearing none. We had a motion and a second, so Mrs. Banco, could we have the consent agenda vote, please? Okay, motion carries with nine yeses. Moving on the agenda, we will talk about board assigned representatives at this point. First area is the Dover Eagle Foundation. I was unable to attend the most recent meeting. I believe, Mr. Cherry, you were there. Could you provide a brief update on that?
I'd love to. So, the actual evening was spent reviewing the grant applications. So, we went through a number of grant applications. We didn't receive grant applications from three schools, so by default, those who had applied pretty much won, unless they were grant applications that were already kind of going to be aligned to what the district was purchasing for next year. So, I believe communication was going out. Like I said, Dover Elementary, to be quite honest, I think cleaned up that evening, so they did very well. And I think we're inviting one committee or one grant person to come back to speak to the committee just for further clarification with that one. But, that was what the entire evening was spent with. So, good applications and good, we're excited to be awarding those grant awards out.
Will there be an opportunity for the foundation to come here and make check presentations to?
We wanted to wait until they did, like I said, needed to speak to one individual who wrote a grant and got clarity.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. York Adams Academy, Mr. Emig.
Our meeting that was scheduled for March 29th is going to be moved to April due to the school director's dinner being held that same night, so there will not be a meeting held. We did get a message from the Director of York Adams Academy, and at this time, I will turn those comments over to the alternate, Mr. Cook.
Ken shared an email with us that probably most of you had a chance to read, but maybe those of you in the public didn't have a chance, and it came from the Director there, Dave Detzel. And if I have a few minutes of your time, I'd like to read what was shared with us. Dear partners in education, I used to live a couple of minutes from the York County prison, but I never had been inside until this past Wednesday. No, I was not being incarcerated. I stopped by to see one of our students, Cody, which is not his real name, but who is currently serving his second stint at YCP. Cody was initially incarcerated in the winter of 2014 during his senior year. He had earned 21.4 credits to that point. During this first stint at YCP, which lasted 13 months, Cody earned 1.5 credits through the Prison Alternative Education Program. When he was discharged in the spring, his district opted to send him to YAA immediately, and Cody agreed. Cody attended in the evening because he was working full-time during the day. He and his girlfriend had a toddler, so Cody obviously had more on his plate than the average teenager. It was not easy, and Cody's studies suffered, but he didn't give up. Fortunately, the summer break was not far away, and Cody made it to the end of the school year, still enrolled. Fast forward to this past August, Cody was not attending, and we could not contact him. I don't remember how, but we finally learned that Cody was incarcerated again, and his length of stay was uncertain. Additionally, he had moved to a different district. We have a good relationship with the educators at YCP, and they use much of the same Jefferson County curriculum that we use, so we put our heads together and figured out that Cody could actually finish his diploma requirements while incarcerated. We had to get the cooperation of his new district, however, and they were more than happy to sponsor Cody. Back to my prison visit, one of the credits that Cody had to complete was his graduation, Careful Awareness Project, which was, part of which entails an interview with the YAA Director. They gave me the option of doing it by phone, but I wanted to see Cody again, and yes, I was curious to see what the inside of the prison was like, organized and busy and lots of orange. Much of the graduation project is completed on the computer, but the inmates are not permitted to go online, so Cody did it the old way, on paper, and he did a very thorough job. His LIU teacher at the prison, Mark Jones, is to be commended as well. Through the interview, I found out that Cody is to be released no later than the middle of this June. He does have a job lined up with his family construction business. Cody's girlfriend is now his wife, their son is three years old. His real wish, though, is to move to the Pacific Northwest to work in his uncle's logging business. Cody wants to get away from the area to get a fresh start. We wish him and his family the best. It was a nice team effort on the part of two districts, the LIU and York Adams Academy, to help Cody finish. This was Dave's response to one particular situation for a student that was pursuing his graduation in a little bit of a different way from what we oftentimes see. And those are the kind of things that York Adams Academy does. It's really neat to see and hear the stories of the graduates there. Each one has a story. So, I thought it would be nice for you to hear one of them yourselves, because we do partner with them and have some of our own students attending there. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Mr. Cook and Mr. Emig. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
I was not able to attend the last meeting, but, Mr. Emig, after having a nice meal Friday, I actually attended their meeting, so I'm going to defer to him at this point.
Yeah, it was a nice event. York County School of Technology did provide a meal for the school directors, representative and alternates. And after that, of course, we did the executive session, then we did the regular board meeting. And we did have four students from Dover that were accoladed to Student of the Month for the month of February at York County School of Technology. So, that's the latest that I can bring back from attending in place of Mr. Delauter.
Thank you, Mr. Emig and Mr. Delauter. LIU Special Education, Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Banco.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Rauchser.
Frustrating.
That sums it up.
That's a nice, brief report. I like that. A man of many words. Okay, PSBA Representative, Mr. Emig.
Due to being assigned as the representative for that, I want to tell you I'm getting a lot of reading done, because that's all I get from PSBA now, is all, my phone keeps lit up by PSBA information. So, and the last thing that I had read was about the budget. They hopefully are going to come to a consensus on that, but, so, like Mr. Rauchser, frustrating.
Thank you, Mr. Emig. Last would be the Dover Industrial Development Committee with Mrs. Herman.
Yes, we have a meeting next Wednesday, so that'll be my first one. But, I did put out a little feeler there, talking to Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Banco about trying to come up with some framework for me, because I don't know anything about this. But, we're trying to bring industry to Dover, and whether or not we want to look at tax exonerations, how we want to do this, how much we want to offer. So, that's why we're an important part of this committee, because obviously with our tax base and everything. So, I think that's something we need to address at some time, some point soon.
And I did send you And I did send you an article. I know Central York has been through it as well, and it is important for you all, because you'll need to vote on that actual exoneration when it comes forth. So I look forward to getting more information. But we do have partnering districts who have been through it. So if we do have questions, we can actually probably reach out to their boards as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Herman. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Cherry.
Also a husky voice here. Just a few things. I had the opportunity with Brad Perkins and Kathy and Jamie to attend a Mid-Atlantic Conference for Technology. So we presented with Edmentum, and we had a really nice time. We had a nice 20 to 25 participants, sparked some interest from neighboring school districts who really want to come and see how we're learning. We put that out there early that we're not perfect by any means, but we're really learning in this process in terms of blended learning and online learning and what that actually looks like. And from that presentation, we've now been asked to submit a presentation to another conference that'll be held down in Texas with Edmentum. So we're going to be working on that presentation here within the week. Also, I just wanted to echo Mr. Eifert's thank you with our Saturday tour facilities. So I thank to all the board members who came out, all the administration who came out, so Deb, Dave, and all the high school principals who were there, Jamie and Kathy who helped us set things up. So we really do appreciate all the time and effort with that. I kind of agree with Mr. Rauhauser. We were talking a little bit in the afternoon. We wish we had had more people show up. But lesson learned, I think we can set this up in the future, and I think sometimes from our first one, we learned how to do it more efficiently. So I look forward to setting these tours up a few more times throughout now and in the summer. I also want to thank the cast and crew who did the production, Mary Poppins. So it provided entertaining songs for the remainder of the weekend. I saw it Saturday afternoon. I know I saw Mr. Emig there, so I thought it was a stellar performance, and I really appreciated seeing all the students there. A group of us attended Pete and C Conference up at Hershey, so we got to see local technology and what's going on in terms of blended learning and online capabilities. So we came back with lots of information and excitement. So we are actually working with a primary classroom down at Live Elementary to infuse some of the technology pieces that we saw up there to begin to think about. While it's great that all of our, you know, fifth, sixth, seventh, and high school students all have the one-to-one devices, what are our primary students getting? So we're looking at figuring out how we can retrofit their classrooms so that they too can have that collaborative experience that our high school and middle school and upper elementary students are getting. So we're in the process of getting some devices and working with one of our kindergarten classrooms down there to see how that could all work out for us possibly in the future. So I look forward to coming to you all in the near future to talk about how we can begin to take a look at primary classrooms, specifically looking at technology. As many of you know, the superintendents met with some of the local legislators here last Friday. So we invited all the legislators, and actually only five showed up. So we had a pretty heated conversation behind closed doors. So the media was there. That was a lot of fun, trying to dodge them, walking up the hallways. But we did walk away, and we actually saw some movement today, if you got my notes from my conference call, that they are pushing for a budget to be approved. So both sides are working. I think there's some frustrated Democrats and also Republicans who do realize that their districts need funds. So they're looking to just restore last year's funding for schools so that they have something to run off of. And I think Jen and I were looking at that, and that would be about $8 million for us approximately, between basic funding and special ed funding combined. So obviously, that would help us. Through that, we also pretty much learned through that that funding for next year will also be flat. We shouldn't be expecting any raises. So as we go into preparing our budget, we've learned that we shouldn't be anticipating any increases from the state. But as Mr. Rauhauser and now Mr. Emig have graciously said, it is frustrating. There seems to be a line drawn and a nice little war going on there in Harrisburg. But frustration has kicked in, and part of that frustration is because some of the legislators are actually running out of money themselves. So now that they're running out of money, it's become very important that a budget get passed, because they'll have no money to pay their own staffers and so forth, and their own office people. So that's kind of, I look at it, that's kind of what they're utilizing to finally say, you know what, we need to pass some sense of a budget. So they guaranteed us 30 days, and I kind of walked out of there with some skepticism. But taking a look at what happened in the House today, it looks like there's some traction. Wolf has already said, anything that they bring him, though, in the next 30 days, he will veto, but they feel that they're going to have the votes that they need to override the veto that he may give. So let's watch the next 30 days. So hopefully, Mr. Rauhauser, you'll have something more positive to present in April as it relates to the budget. But we did enjoy the time that we had with our representatives last Friday. One of the things that we're exploring, and we've been working with Bobby and now Jared too, is taking a look at the collaborative space at the high school. So part of our work, and probably some of the things that will be coming with the board in the future, are some capital improvements to the media center, and how we can take a look at making that a more collaborative space for students and kind of getting away from, and I think many of you saw that when we took the facilities tour on Saturday, of kind of getting away from that traditional bookcases and books and so forth like that, and how we can actually make it a more inviting space for kids to come in and collaborate on thinking, on projects, and so forth. So we look forward to bringing some ideas for you or to you in the near future. Certification audits, I have a team of individuals, and we've been visiting all the schools. So I just want to personally say thank you to all the staff as we've been going around visiting schools to really review their certifications, to make sure that our records are up to date. And what we quickly found is our records are not quite up to date. So I've actually enjoyed the minute to two-minute conversations I've had with folks to kind of say, this is what our, these are what our records are saying, what are you actually certified in? And just actually reviewing when they've been hired in a district, how long they've been here, what schools they've been into. So we've heard some really fascinating stories as we've kind of done that tour of duty. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Any questions from board members from Mr. Cherry on his report?
Ken, I was just curious about the facilities tour that we did. There was a number of things that were identified, and you mentioned a couple of them there, the high school. But I know there was a number of things that were presented to us. I was just curious, what is the follow-up? What is your thought on some of those things? Will they be discussed in committee, excuse me, addressed there, or is there a plan?
Mr. Emig and I, because you spoke about that. So all that information will get sent to the committee on Thursday. They'll provide a summary for the board in the following in April.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Do any board members have anything else they'd like to add to tonight?
I do. We toured, we saw, we cried. So now I want to talk to Mrs. Benko, because I had some, I just want to know where we are with money. I want to know what our debt is. I want to know what we can possibly, where we can possibly go from that. If we have a certain amount of debt, how much can we request as far as buildings go? How much money we can obviously borrow more of? And you did answer my question about the intermediate school being the only building. If we could get state subsidy on it.
Yes. So right now, with the plan con process, you have to, you can only build every 20 years. So the IS is up, where we should be good for that project. The, our total borrowing base, our debt limit for the district right now is at $116,107,679. Our total debt payments right now that we have outstanding yet to pay is approximately $50 million. That leaves us approximately $60 to $70 million of available debt capacity to use going into any renovation or building project.
So what does that mean if, I mean, just because we have $116 million availability there, that doesn't mean that we should do that? That, what kind of a condition will that leave us in? And, you know, when I hear $50 million, that's scary enough, but then you're saying we could go 60 or 70 million more. So what?
Well, and it all depends on the timing also, because as the years go by, our debt's being paid down. All of our debt is scheduled to be paid off right now at 2027. So, you know, depending how we structure that debt, you know, when we do have to borrow, and, you know, what the timing of that is, it can all change.
Okay.
Would that answer your questions?
Yeah, I have to go home and think about this.
And Mrs. Herman, what we wanted to do, and I think Steve, you have brought it up before, is in April, the first meeting on Tuesday, we're actually presenting next year's budget. What we'd like to do then on Thursday is go into a more detailed account of our expenses, where we actually sit financially, what is our capable, or what is our capacity? And then how do we stretch that debt so it doesn't actually burden the taxpayers in the end? So if you give us, we have a lot of the information. We actually worked on it, because we know at some point in time, we need to do a public meeting with that. So we thought we would do a nice test run next month and do a board presentation to actually kind of review our debt, our structure, what could we actually technically afford? When, if we decided to ever do a building project, when would we want to hit go, so to speak, and what would that entail? So give us four more weeks, and I think we'll go very deep for you, and you'll get a lot of questions answered. You can still think about other additional questions, and if any board members want to send that to us ahead of time, we can try to work that into the presentation so that we answer them for you during that time.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko.
Anything else from any other board members?
Yes. A suggestion for this on the miscellaneous, if we're going to have any more facility tours, would probably be nice if we put on Global Connect and get the newspapers to put something in, because I heard some people say that, you know, didn't know about it.
I know some of our lessons learned about how we could better advertise this, so we'll make sure to set those up going forward.
I had two items to list here. First of all, I wanted to mention that last week, I had the privilege of attending the Live Talent Show, which I learned was the 14th year of the Live Talent Show. They had 50 different acts perform. It's a marathon session, but those nights are the most glamorous time for each one of those individuals that got a chance to go up on stage, and how some of those kindergarten and first graders could go up there and sing a song in front of an auditorium full of people is way beyond me. But just wanted to give kudos to them for that evening of entertainment. And I also had a question. Last, I think it was last month, we approved the graduation requirements, the change in the graduation requirements. I had a question about that. After we had made that vote, I got to thinking about some of the things that were discussed that night, and I had a follow-up question regarding that, pertains to the area of health and physical education. Were any of the requirements changed or lowered for that as opposed to where they had been before? Do you know the answer to that?
The state requirement for health and P is one credit. So we currently had three in place, so we did reduce it to two.
Okay. Along that line, I was just thinking back to some of the things that I've read over the last few years, and some of the topics regarding childhood obesity, and I was reading several articles about other test schools, test programs that featured more activity and their relationship to test scores and better performance and that sort of thing. And I don't pretend to be an expert, but just thinking about that, I'm wondering, have we done a disservice to our students by lowering that expectation from where it currently is to, you know, one less credit? I just, I'm curious how the rest of the board feels about that.
Well, I mean, I think part of it is not imposing what we believe and kind of giving what the kids, just because we believe that they need more exercise doesn't mean that the kids actually want it. I also would say that, but we're not reducing staff by reducing credits. So now it allows the staff to actually offer different electives rather than just PE. So it gives the creativity for the staff members to say, here, these are other opportunities that I can offer now to all kids, because not every kid enjoys going to PE. So if you're not a student who enjoys that, you know, you hate those three credits, or you hate those credits and you hate that time to go there. So by reducing it, yeah, all kids do have to get the credits, but then you can, like I said, really target some elective classes for kids who really want to explore PE outside the classroom by offering those things. And I think we did offer some new programming this year for those students. So like I said, I look at it as a time for the PE staff to be more creative, to offer things to more kids other than just a PE class.
Other active classes, though? I mean, other things that feature exercise and that sort of thing is, you know, not necessarily sitting still.
And that's something for them to work on, and I think that's something I did say to Jared and others, is during this time and coming up to next year's, you'll have that ability to create those classes and what you want. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
After I got stuck on the parallel bars one time in gym, that was my least favorite class after that one time. So I don't know how you get stuck on them, but I did get stuck on them. Anything else from board members? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move on to our second public comment period. Again, this is for items on or off the agenda. This is a two-minute period instead of a three-minute period. And again, if you would like to come to the podium and state your name and address, we welcome you. Okay. Seeing none, just a few announcements to make. We do have our planning and committee meetings this week. Thursday night, we have our board committee meetings beginning at 6:00 PM. There will be a brief executive session prior to the committee meetings for about 5, 10 minutes, an executive session after the planning meeting, which occurs at 7:00 PM. And then we have our April meetings. We have our regular board meeting, April 19th, at 7:00 PM, and our board committee meeting, April 21st, at 6:00, and our board planning meeting at 7:00 on the 21st. All that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.